Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Cable Cast Public Hearing for Wednesday, October 22, 2025, relative to Bill 2025-2149. Would a clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 2149, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Code Article Five Use Regulations, Chapter 911 Primary Uses and Chapter 912 Accessory Uses and Article Eight Review and Enforcement, Chapter 922 Development Review Procedures, all to amend outdoor retail sales and service primary and accessory uses.
Thank you. Our first order of business will be an introduction by the Department of City Planning, followed by the testimony of registered speakers. If you would kindly introduce yourself and give us your overview.
All right. Andrew Dash, Deputy Director, Department of City Planning.
Melissa Hill, Economic Opportunity Planner, Department of City Planning.
Monica Bender, Assistant Director of Licensing and Administration with Permits, Licenses, and Inspections.
And so today what we'll talk about is this is amendment to the zoning code, which is part of a pair of amendments that the Departments of City Planning and Permits, License, and Inspections have put together around the opportunities that the city has relative to vending. And so, you know, really what we see as a part of this, you know, just as an overview of, you know, vending is, you know, as it shows on the screen, really being able to sell, sells or do sales from a non-permanent structure. So this can be anything from, you know, this typically represented is something like food trucks, but there are, you know, clothing and other sales, there's mobile barbers, there's a whole host of things that, you know, that entrepreneurs are doing through trucks, carts, or other non-permanent structures. And so, you know, this zoning bill, as well as the companion vending bill, which will kind of speak to both of those, are really focused around that. So there are a lot of opportunities that vending provides. So, you know, Melissa's here as our Economic Opportunity Planner. We do see that there is a lot of opportunity for an expansion of the vending program to be able to provide more opportunities at lower cost for people with an idea or entrepreneurs to be able to start a business here in the city of Pittsburgh. We do think that there is a lot of, you know, you know, also opportunity for these to create more vibrancy in our commercial districts and in other locations such as our parks, and we'll kind of walk through that, as well as, you know, really the opportunity and thank you, Councilwoman, for my water bottle, you know, for, for a lot of, you know, convenience. We will talk, as we talk through these amendments around, you know, the ways that we are really trying to hopefully, you know, modernize a program that, you know, isn't necessarily working as well as we'd like, create this opportunity and be able to do so in ways that protects our brick and mortar businesses, you know, in our business districts. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa, who will walk through some of the details of the zoning code amendment.
Thanks. Currently, this is, this program operates both through the business licensing section of our code and through our zoning code. However, those two processes are not in conversation with one another as it is currently written in the regulation. So, PLI oversees mobile vending, which occurs mostly in metered parking spots throughout the city. Mobile vendors are required to move every four hours and can only use the parking lane. A stationary vendor, on the other hand, has a specific license for a location that is typically in the sidewalk. There are some cases where this is a parking, parking lane location. On private property, this use is governed by the zoning code, which we're here to discuss today. As of now, vending on private property requires the typical zoning review process, but that process does not work quickly for a use of this type and, as written now, is restricted to a few urban center districts and is allowed as an accessory use kind of at the discretion of the zoning administrator. Some of the challenges that we've heard and that Monica has heard over the last few years in running this program have been that both regulators and applicants are confused about what the rules are, what licenses are needed, and what to do if there is a complaint and someone is not following the rules. The number of locations that are allowed for vending is quite limited and there is not an effective process to add to these locations. You know, to be, to clarify, so if there was a desire to add a new stationary vending location, that would need to go through a legislated committee made up of staff members from a handful of departments and representatives from the mayor's office, who would need to review the location. However, that committee does not have standardized criteria for location review and typically in the past has not approved very many of those locations because of that lack of standard criteria. In cases where this is approved, it then has to go through city council and be a separate piece of legislation, which, as you know, can, that can add, you know, several months at that point, and the season that the vendor was interested in using may have passed. If a location gets through all of that, then the vendor who initially proposed the location does not have priority and has to go through the typical lottery process for the new location. And finally, it's been a very long time since the fee schedule has been evaluated for this program and there's been a need to revamp how enforcement happens and, you know, focusing on education and assistance in coming into compliance and then having a direct means of enforcing when, when necessary. Over the past year, the Department of City Planning, the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure have undergone a thorough planning process to understand what was going wrong with this program, how have other cities approached these challenges, and how are our departments able or not able to handle their respective components of the program. We have benefited greatly from the precedent of Domi's Outdoor Dining and Retail License developed during the pandemic, and many of the standards that are part of that also can apply to vending. This process to date has been documented in a white paper on vending and how this fits into the just transition or the idea that in the future we have a more just economy and that change happens, both to have just outcomes and a just process. So those recommendations have been subject to continued engagement throughout the past few months and are now reflected in the two pieces of legislation that are in front of us today. Specifically, we are here to discuss the zoning text amendment, but this is really a companion bill to a repeal and replace of Chapter 719, Vendors and Peddlers. To overview the primary changes that are proposed to Chapter 719, this would remove the current separate processes for operating on public or private property to create a single entry point into our licensing system. That would require all vendors to obtain an annual vending license. This would give us an opportunity to standardize what is required of a location and specifically the top concerns from city staff are making sure that there are traffic safety standards that are followed, that there are accessibility standards followed, and that the land use policy that the city has developed aligns with where we're allowing this activity. So tying this to the zoning code. We would have a standard process for locations that need some extra review and that would not necessarily be as appropriate for an over-the-counter review. In other words, outlining downtown and our park systems as areas where each vending spot would have a public hearing and go through the Public Art and Civic Design Commission. This would also remove the current four-hour time limit. That means mobile vendors have to move every four hours, which has been very challenging to enforce and also leaves ambiguity for regulators in determining kind of what, what counts as moving every four hours. The zoning text amendment that we're looking at today amends the zoning code at three chapters, the primary uses, accessory uses, and the record of zoning approval and certificate of occupancy process. In the use table, this would replace what exists now as outdoor retail sales and services non-accessory with a new primary use to, to clarify of the primary versus accessory use. It removes some language that restricts vending on private property from occurring within 100 feet of a competitive business. That competition clause will still apply in the right-of-way, however. And this replaces current language on, you know, other paperwork such as hellfire, other approvals, with just the requirement to obtain a vending license where applicable to remove the redundancy. This would allow outdoor retail sales and services by right in most mixed-use districts and it would also, or in all mixed-use districts and in the special, or in the golden triangle in most of our districts and especially MI. And currently, it is only allowed by right in UCMU and UCE. This would also allow the accessory use of outdoor retail sales and services, so when the use is subordinate to the primary use on, on a lot by right in all non-residential districts and in residential districts, one accessory to a handful of uses such as agriculture, community centers, parks and recreation, religious assembly, and schools. In the accessory use chapter, we similarly have removed certain redundant language to align with the primary use changes in the standards as well. Finally, this amends Chapter 922, which deals with the development review process to outline specific cases where a full zoning review would not be required, to make sure that we are not getting in the business of doing a full zoning review just for, you know, a very temporary setup. And so it outlines, you know, when we would need to do that full review and when we wouldn't. However, in all cases, the use standards apply and are enforceable. I'm going to pass it back to Deputy Director Dash to wrap up.
Yeah, so as Melissa outlined, between the, you know, the one-on-one meetings that we had, public meetings, meetings with, with council and others, you know, we've kind of moved into phase four of this project, which is really moving it towards adoption. Through all of those conversations, if we go to the next slide, you know, we are, you know, looking and have had conversations with members around, you know, some potential amendments based on those conversations. In the zoning bill, which we're really, you know, kind of primarily focused on today, really the only one that we are looking at, this came from a conversation with Councilwoman Gross, was around making sure that, you know, our intention being that we want to allow for vending to occur in parks, but, you know, our parks zoning, since we're aligning this with zoning districts, our park zoning district covers more than just the city parks and so, so trying to create, so making a change to allow that as vending is an accessory use in parks specifically, to make sure that our intent is able to be followed through in the amendments that we're making. You know, some other things that, you know, will follow in the vending legislation, so again, you know, not the piece of legislation that's here, is to establish a priority for outdoor dining and retail. This is that, you know, if there is a vendor in a, in a location at a storefront, at a storefront where they wish to pursue outdoor dining and retail, that they would get the priority over that space. And then we would work to, you know, to potentially find a different location for the vendor. You know, working on, you know, some other, you know, kind of, you know, kind of smaller, more operational pieces, you know, which is really around kind of table setups and, you know, pre-approved, you know, locations, being a little bit clearer on the exempted boundaries for the strip districts. So the strip district is, you know, the heart of the strip is an area where the vending requirements presently do not apply. We are continuing that in this piece of legislation. You know, I think the other thing that is maybe of note here, you know, is around competition. So there are competition clauses, you know, for, you know, for vending that occurs in the right-of-way, so that they have to be spaced from brick and mortar businesses that might be selling the same thing. We obviously want to, again, provide protection to our brick and mortar businesses while at the same time increasing opportunity for vending. And, you know, and working through a number of our conversations, there was some clarity that needed to be made on enforcement. And so, go one more. You know, you know, in addition, you know, to this, although it is outside of the legislation, we did share with members, you know, our draft rules and regulations, guidelines for the program, you know, just so how, you know, Monica and the licensing team will work in actually administering these rules and enforcing these rules. So, you know, we, we shared that with, with council members, you know, like I said, not as the thing that you're, that, you know, the legislation's being voted on, but support for that legislation as to how, you know, the, you know, the, that this will be, that this will be operated. In addition, you know, we will be providing materials for, you know, for folks to provide more of that clarity on what is legal and what is not legal when it comes to vending, because that is something that whether that is from our internal partner departments like DPW that works in our parks, or public safety that's, you know, that are, that are having a role in what I might call more informal enforcement of vending, you know, or to folks like our business districts and, you know, and, and others, you know, so that they, there's a greater clarity on these standards and how they apply and so that, you know, so that it's easier for neighborhoods or residential, you know, community groups or others to be able to identify when somebody is vending, if that's something that, you know, that, that is happening legally or not. So with that, I think that can, oh, so just, yeah, just to conclude, again, I kind of stated this at the very beginning, we do see long-term benefits that are, you know, that are really important to, you know, why we're doing this. So, you know, how do we create opportunities for new entrepreneurs here in the city of Pittsburgh? How do we create more vibrant business districts? And, you know, how do we work this as a program in a way that really is more efficient from a city perspective as to how we operate and how we try to allow this to happen? So with that, thank you, and that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. For the record, we've been joined by Councilwoman Schlossberger, Councilwoman Wilson, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Kail Smith, Councilwoman Warwick, and Councilwoman Gross. We will now move on to our registered speakers. After you are called, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Christopher Risotto.
We apologize before our first time ever speaking in front of anything ever in life, and I'm 39, probably 40, but Pittsburgh, Representative Allentown. I have a little thing, hopefully this goes well, but I have a little thing I got to put out. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Christopher Risotto, owner of Steel City Hot Dogs and Catering. I'm a lifetime resident of Pittsburgh and I operate a successful mobile, stationary, and mobile vending business throughout Western PA and downtown locations. I strongly support the proposed vending amendments. Little backstory, my business is built on tradition. When I was seven years old, I visited the iconic original hot dog shop, AKA The O, with my mother. She ordered me a hot dog piled high with ketchup, mustard, mayo, pickles, onions, and she looked at me and said, "Now that's how you eat a hot dog, son." That simple classic memory is deeply rooted in the passion behind Steel City Hot Dogs. My business is built on serving not just food, but a piece of the city's heart and tradition. This deep connection is why I'm passionate about the thriving vending business in Pittsburgh, a fair trade-off for a better future. I understand these proposed amendments will likely lead to increased permits, higher fees, and operational costs. I welcome this investment. I believe higher commitment to the program is a fair trade-off for a better, more structured business environment and ultimately benefits us all. I'm willing to pay more in permitting fees for the benefit of clear-defined premium vending locations that enhance our visibility and profitability, the structure that will generate more consistent revenue for the program, which I trust will be reinvested into improved oversight and fair enforcement. Crucial request for established vendors. However, my support is tampered by a crucial request as we open the door to new opportunities with, we must ensure safeguard the business that have anchored this industry and invest years of loyalty and sweat equity. I urge you to structure this program to fairly prioritize or credit established vendors so that we are not suplanted by incoming competition. Let's take care of the ones who sustain the vending, vending scene through the tough years, our long-term vision and urgency. This isn't just about a hot dog cart. This is a first crucial step towards my ultimate goal, establishing a brick and mortar location to serve the community year-round. Why I always maintain my mobile operation because I love serving diverse communities, not just in Pittsburgh, but throughout our region. The new rules are the catalyst that can make that dream of a permanent business a reality. The urgency of clear vending guidelines is underscored by the fact the NFL draft will be in our city next year. This event will bring hundreds of thousands of visitors, putting a global spotlight on our streets. We must prepare, we must be prepared to present an organized, professional, world-class street vending scene. However, our focus must extend beyond next year's crowds. Clear, effective guidelines implemented today ensure a thriving, fair, and profitable vending environment for decades to come, long after the crowds are gone. So I'd like, thank you for your time and consideration. I urge you to vote in favor of these amendments. Perfect. That's it.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Our next speaker is Chief Pomai. Who is not online, I do not see her here. Our next speaker is Hannah Moska. We can, yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Hi there, my name is Hannah Moska. I'm, I'm online. I appreciate you making this possible. I'm feeling under the weather. I am in Forest Hills, but I'm here as a representative of Grow Pittsburgh and an advocate for small urban farmers. I strongly support this proposed legislation. The new vending code will make it more accessible for urban farmers to support themselves financially as well as increase food access for our most vulnerable populations. At Grow Pittsburgh, we operate two farm stands in the city. One is at Shiloh Farm. This farm is zoned for commercial use and we operate a weekly farm stand on site from May through October. This farm and market has been in operation since 2010, and this year we have served over 2,200 people, which is an average of 150 people per week. The other market that we operate in the city was established in 2016 by the Homewood Food Access Working Group, and the Homewood Market has been rotating commercial locations until finally settling in at Everyday Cafe in 2023. Serving over 1,000 customers this season alone, the Homewood Market provides a consistent source for affordable, locally grown, and culturally appropriate food to residents who lack access to a neighborhood grocery store. Operating next door to Homewood Station, a senior high-rise, this farm stand operates in collaboration with other nearby growers and serves as a model for increasing food access for vulnerable populations. Expanding farm stand operations like that in Homewood to residential districts has the potential to greatly improve food security while also bringing the many benefits of urban agriculture to our communities. Through our work with community and school gardens, Grow Pittsburgh has seen more interest in market gardens and community farms. Part of the support that these projects are often seeking is help with navigating zoning and permitting restrictions. As the cost of food continues to rise, we have an opportunity to support residents through improving access to fresh, affordable, and healthy food while also providing easier paths for market, to market for entrepreneurs. With agriculture as one of the governor's five key industry sectors of government, or of economic development, this is also more important now than ever. Reducing barriers for small urban farmers to sell produce in the city will have lasting economic and social benefits in our communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Andrews.
Hello, this is Mike Andrews. I'm speaking to you online. I grew up in Pittsburgh. I went to Pittsburgh High School. I live in Brentwood, which is a suburb of the city. I've been a vendor since 2003 on the North Shore. And what I'd like to communicate is mainly the safety. West General Robinson Street especially, there's a lot of motorists, they come in from out of town. They're uncertain because of signage, wear apart. There is a speed limit that should be put in place during events. I notice a lot of people, a lot of motorists that speed on West General Robinson, and I also see a lot of people crossing the street and it's not at the corners. As far as the vending community in the North Shore, they do provide safety. In the most recent years, there's less police officers, and if you see something, you call 911. There's a lot of people from out of town, from New York, from Ohio, from West Virginia that frequently come to our events here in Pittsburgh. And it needs to be made a safer environment for these people with signage and also West General Robinson. There needs to be more restrictions on how fast an automobile, a motorcycle, an electric scooter can travel on that street. It's very dangerous for motorists as well as pedestrians trying to cross. And that's really my main concerns.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Daniel McCarthy.
Good afternoon, councilors. My name is Dan McCarthy. I'm from Shadyside, but I'm here today representing Just Harvest, as I'm an organizer with Just Harvest. Just Harvest works to address hunger in Allegheny County at its root, economic injustice, through a focus on public policy, on food access, and community power. I'm here today in support of the zoning code amendment, and I also want to echo and agree with the comments previously mentioned by Grow Pittsburgh, who's one of our many great partners as part of the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council. I want to especially highlight how this amendment would allow accessory farm stands to residential zones, which will expand food access in communities by providing legal and flexible options for urban growers. It really recognizes the role that urban agriculture can play in Pittsburgh's economy and culture and supports equitable food access and local entrepreneurship. We know there are communities experiencing food apartheid in the city, and they have been excluded from affordable and accessible food sources. Local farm stands, mobile vendors, urban agriculture can all play a part in alleviating these barriers. By creating these opportunities, the city council can also support food sovereignty for these neighborhoods, where a community can have more say in its own food sources and not be forced to rely on corporate grocery chains. And through this, we can reduce food insecurity, communities can prioritize culturally important foods, and also share the knowledge, skills, and tradition of growing foods in the community. I also want to mention that access to transportation is a major barrier for food access, second only to the high cost of food. So creating opportunities like accessory farm stands can directly reduce the barriers to food access in a neighborhood. I'd like to urge the council to support this amendment and promote equitable food access and food sovereignty across the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brittany Baldwin.
All right, good afternoon, council members. I'm Brittany Baldwin. I'm actually here in regard to the restricted personal goods retail matter, but it seems like you guys are not speaking on that at the moment, so I'd gladly forfeit my time, as well as Sean Painters, who's also here for the same matter.
Which matter? I'm sorry.
Restricted personal goods. Councilman Bobby Wilson, I believe, brought it to the board originally.
Okay, no, we're not here for that today.
I'll forfeit my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Apply to Sean as well. So our next speaker is Adrian Nelson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, good afternoon. My name is Adrian Nelson. I live in Brighton Heights, and I'm here to talk in favor about these zoning changes as opportunities specifically for urban farmers to get their food efficiently directly to eaters and tables across our city. I am a farmer. I grow dry beans outside of the city in Indiana and sell my product through another farm at the Bloomfield Farmers Market. I also work with the National Young Farmers Coalition, supporting farmers across Pennsylvania to advocate for policies and programs that reduce barriers of entry for new growers and to help small farm business owners in growing and sustaining their farms. Over the last eight years, I've worked closely with partners and farmers within Allegheny County to advocate for urban land access. Additionally, I've worked with state policymakers to uplift the importance of urban ag for our cities and for food sovereignty in urban communities. There's been so much support for urban land access, infrastructure access, and general public support during these past years, and that's been super inspiring. There's an incredible amount of passion within Pittsburgh to build up our urban ag community and to make it be sustainable, but many growers do find themselves at a crossroads to success in scaling up their businesses when it comes to selling their product. This is not just This is not just the case in Pittsburgh, but in most urban centers around the state of Pennsylvania. Allowing urban growers to sell on their farm site or in commercials-zoned locations around the city would set a precedent and a replicable model for other cities in Pennsylvania. Farmers have to be incredibly nimble and creative with their operations as growers, as well as merchants. Right now, in Pittsburgh, most, most of the opportunity for small growers to get their food to consumers is at weekly farmers' markets, and that's pretty limiting. One chance a week to sell your product is not always enough to sustain a small business. And many growers have more produce than what they can sell at these markets. So these two new opportunities we're talking about will open an abundance of creative solutions to ensure that the food that is carefully grown in our city does get to community members' tables, and that the growers who work hard to grow that food are adequately compensated for their work. This will help the long-term success of individual farm businesses, help to reach ambitions of building food sovereignty in our city, and hopefully would set Pittsburgh as a model of success for urban ag across the region. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elena Brown.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Elena Brown. I'm here on behalf of the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council as the policy coordinator there, also as a former farmer and a Stan Heights resident. I want to express my strong support for the proposed updates to the city's vending code. This legislation would allow for accessory farm stands and residential zoning and mobile vendor permit options, both of which are new pathways that never existed before. Currently, there are only a few viable farmers' markets in the city, and of those, they have a lot of legacy vendors. So it is either difficult or nearly impossible for new vendors to enter those spaces. Our farmers have been boxed out of vending opportunities due to outdated rules. This legislation could change that. It could recognize farming as its own unique form of vending, and also help city residents by creating more access points for fresh local food right in their neighborhoods. Also, farming is a cultural way of life, and it is a life-sustaining work. It feeds us, connects us, and supports regional economy. Yet, PASA has reported that the median net income for small farms in Pennsylvania is about $18,000, which is just barely above the poverty line. When we talk about building a stronger local food system, we need to talk about making farming viable. This legislation could also directly advance several goals in the Greater Pittsburgh Food Action Plan, such as encouraging local policies and permits that make local food sales feasible in urban areas, and expanding the number and diversity of retail options, including farm stands and pop-up markets. In short, this is not just a permit change, it's a policy that can build infrastructure for locally-rooted economic development for all, and it can make of Pittsburgh a leader in this area. I strongly support this code update, and I thank the council for recognizing that agriculture deserves a rightful place in our city's vending system. Thank you all for your time and your continued support.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melissa Larrick. Larrick?
Good afternoon, council. My name is Melissa Larrick, and I'm a resident of Charpsburg. But today, I'm serving as the Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Brewers Guild, a nonprofit organization serving as the unified voice for 44 member breweries who own and operate across Allegheny County. I'm here today in support of updating the mobile vending policy to help clarify permit processes and make them more efficient, equitable, and reflective of how our city operates today. A majority of our member breweries rely on mobile food vendors to provide food options for their guests, as well as local makers and artists who contribute to successful special events. This proposed policy update is therefore of great importance to our members and to the broader ecosystem of small businesses we work alongside. While most of our members, vendors, operate on private property, we support these changes because the city's landscape and the needs of its businesses and residents have evolved significantly since the current policy was written. We believe this update can create more equitable opportunities for community-focused events, such as food truck roundups that utilize public parks and plazas, while also supporting crowd management and safety. Additionally, this, by streamlining the process for mobile vending, Pittsburgh could see an expansion of late-night food options, something our city is sorely lacking, which in turn supports the growth of a safe and thriving nighttime economy. The Pittsburgh Brewers Guild and its members are proud to contribute to the city's growth and evolution. We believe a refreshed and inclusive mobile vending policy will help all ships rise safely, fairly, and efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anthony Dolan.
Hello, folks. I really don't have a strong position one way or the other on this ordinance, other than I really want to make sure that specifically for the various business districts that have a lot of people paying rent, and we've got a lot of established brick-and-mortar businesses in them, that there is a lot of caretaking and discussions with the various business districts about, you know, where and if these vendors should be located, and what types. I know that the, I'm really primarily focused on the East Liberty Business District, of which I represent multiple property, properties and multiple businesses. This is not something, I'm coming to this party a little bit late, so... But I know that the chamber has been very concerned about this issue in the business district in the past. And before, before we would allow these vendors into the East Liberty Business District, I just would ask there be a lot more discussion with the stakeholders in that business district. If all the parties are happy to do so and happy to have those vendors, then I'm happy to see it. I'm not against anything that the other speakers have brought up. I'm an entrepreneur myself, and certainly understand how they can be a positive impact on the community. But, you know, there has to be some discussion with the stakeholders already in those, in those communities, specifically in the business districts. So if you guys are gonna go down this path and start to streamline a process for these vendors, make it, make it more accessible to them in other parts of the city, I would ask certainly my councilman to take that into consideration. Like I said, you know, what may be good for one business district may not be that great for another, so that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Edward Lassoon.
My name is Edward Lassoon, I'm with the East Liberty Quarter Chamber of Commerce. Couple things regarding the collaboration that I read about that Melissa was doing with the different communities. We have not seen that in East Liberty. If you haven't got there yet, please contact the East Liberty Chamber of Commerce to coordinate with us, so we in turn can take all your consensus and distribute it as far as we can to all the people down there. That way, the consensus will be much more objective. In the meantime, some of the board members were thinking about a couple things. And one thing they thought of was that the committee is putting a lot of effort towards the, I believe, the NFL thing for next year, to try to make a nice impression, showing how many catering people we have out there. What we're seeing in East Liberty is, we would prefer that you take your reference and pour them into East Liberty in the form of filling up our vacant storefronts, filling up our second-floor office spaces. This is what we need for a better and well-structured East Liberty. We did have, at one time, we had people coming into the community, and they were vending, and they destroyed the community. It took us 10 years to come back from it again. And I believe that the ordinance still has a stipulation in here that there'll be no vending in the East Liberty District. But we're still trying to survive from that. The big question that comes up is, why can you not help us with the, the structure of the buildings themselves? These are the taxpaying people that actually stay here long after the migratory vendors are long gone. And I thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
I'm sorry, I thought I was signed in. My name is Howard Todd. I'm the owner of Defuser's Ice Cream Delight and Grand Brew on Shadow Street in Mount Washington neighborhood. I've been in the business district since 1933. Vacant buildings that we turned into dreams over three decades ago. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Mount Washington Community Development Corporation, and I sit on the Business District Advisory Committee. I am speaking today on behalf of the WCCDC. Over the years, mobile vending has been an issue along Grand Avenue Avenue, Virginia Avenue connecting streets of Mount Washington and Business Districts. Mobile vending directly competes with brick-and-mortar businesses and have an unfair advantage over those same brick-and-mortar businesses. Brick-and-mortar businesses have costs and businesses that mobile vendors do not incur. In fact, some local businesses suffered many losses through COVID-19 pandemics because of these types of expenses, such as rent, utilities, insurance. Furthermore, local businesses here are locally in improved neighborhood economies. They are not benefits conferred by mobile vendors. In response to local business concerns about mobile and stationary vending on Mount Washington, Pittsburgh City Council enacted an ordinance in '95 to prevent mobile and stationary vending in these business districts. The relevant code section is 71905A-H, to be specific, for my business district. Over the years, mobile vendors and stationary vendors have violated this code section on a regular basis and with, without having research permit requirements on the vending prohibition on the mount. The places, it's placed an unfair burden on local businesses to ensure that the law is enforced. Particularly, to address the problem, the city actually posted no vending signs on Grand Avenue Avenue, which great success, and we have not had any problems since. I am concerned that changes in the current code, or ordinances or related codes, will encourage mobile and stationary vendors to become bypass section 71905A and unfairly compete with business districts in Mount Washington. And any revision to the codes regarding expanding mobile, stationary vending should not adversely affect the business district in Mount Washington or any other business district in any other area. On a personal note, my dreams are now my grandkids' dreams. Through history, persistence, dedication, and pride, they were covering my dreams on, and I thank you for your this time and listen to my objection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, in adding, I have 14 seconds left. I do have a 400-page petition against vending from the local community, and it was very, wasn't a door-knocking thing.
Thank you.
I will give that to my district councilperson. Thank you.
You can give us, we can take it now.
That's it?
If you want it, we can take it now and then distribute it to all members.
I'll give it to my councilperson, if that's okay?
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Signal further speakers, is there anything from members? If not, this will come up for discussion at next week's standing committee meeting. And having exhausted the business of this public hearing, this meeting is adjourned.